Good evening and welcome to the Scott County Planning Advisory Commission meeting for November 14th, 2022. I call this meeting to order, and I'll start out with the roll call and introductions. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Robbins?
Here.
Commissioner Henshaw's absent. Commissioner Pika?
Here.
Commissioner Huber?
Here.
Commissioner Von Hoof?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Watson?
Here.
Also in the room with us this evening, we have at the end of the podium here Brad Davis, our planning manager. In the audience, I see Marty Schmitz, our zoning administrator Greg Wagner. Our principal planner is in the audio room right now. Nathan Hall, our associate planner is here. Tom Wolfe, our county board commissioner, is also with us this evening. And I think I've covered everyone there. Our first item of business is the approval of the October 10th, 2022 meeting minutes. All the commissioners have been sent a copy. The men had an opportunity to review them. Are there any corrections, deletions, or additions to the minutes as printed? At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
They approve?
I'll second.
A motion by Commissioner Pika, second by Commissioner Johnson. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I abstain.
With Commissioner Robbins abstaining. The minutes are approved. There is no consent agenda this evening. We have no items on the consent agenda. So the first item we have is a request 2022-064, to request for an interim use permit of a home extended business. David and Sheila Lauren are the applicants and the property owners in Section 36 of Spring Lake Township. And Mr. Hall will be making our staff report this evening. Good evening, Mr. Hall.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Good evening, Commissioners. The subject property is located in Section 36 of Spring Lake Township, and it is a largely open property with an existing home and a pole building. The rear half of the property is wetland. It does have road access from 217th Street East, which is a paved county road, also known as County Road 8. The applicant submitted this application for an interim use permit after receiving notice of violation from our code compliance officer back in August of this year. And our officer noted that the Scott County had become aware of the business used at the property, and that an application for a home extended business might be the appropriate action for them to take to correct that violation. The property is Zone Rural Residential Reserve, or RR1, and that allows for home extended businesses through an interim use permit on parcels five acres or larger. The applicant's home business is an aviation parts developer and fabricator, as explained in their narrative. The county ordinance regulations, county ordinance allows for one non-resident employee working on site, and that does have one non-resident employee that does occasionally work from the site. And they also have a family member who is both a resident of the home and also an employee. No customers would be on the property currently or proposed. They get all their shipments in and out through UPS and other package delivery services. The operation is entirely inside the existing pole building, as is required by Scott County zoning ordinance. And the structure has a variety of different areas within it. The upper level has an office area. There's also storage space and different areas for fabrication of aircraft components with CNC machines, 3D printer, those types of items. The permits to construct the existing accessory building, they were issued for personal storage, not for commercial purposes. And so the Scott County building official did review this application, and they are requiring a change of use permit, should this permit be approved, this interim use permit be approved, so that the commercial uses of the structure can continue. Scott County Environmental Services did review this request, and they did visit the site and visited with the applicant. And the department has emphasized that no business wastewater can be discharged into the septic system. And the septic system is large enough that they can accommodate the residents of the household and also the use by the one employee. The township did provide a recommendation at their meeting last Thursday. They did recommend approval of the request without any conditions. And subject to the conditions of approval, the proposed interim use permit appears to conform to the zoning ordinance, and therefore staff is recommending approval of the interim use permit based on the criteria that are listed in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Are there any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson.
How long have they been there?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, it appears that they have been there for some time. I don't have that date from the applicant as to when they first started.
I've been past it many times, but I didn't know that there was a business there. And then, Mr. Chairman, do they need to have a restroom since they have an outside employee?
Commissioner Johnson, they do have a restroom in the building. One of the things the building official will look at is likely whether it's handicap accessible and meeting those types of requirements.
It doesn't look like there's a restroom on their drawing. Oh, here it is. Okay. I see.
I believe Commissioner Johnson, their restroom is on the mezzanine level with their office.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Robbins? Is the applicant here tonight? Good. I'm interested, just wanted to know that you said they're going to be making, I think, aviation parts?
Correct, Commissioner Robbins.
Sir, if you'd like to come up to the podium, and there is a sign-in sheet, and then please start your comments with your name, so we have that in the record. Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I'd just like the applicant to sort of tell us what those might be and who he would sell them to.
We make, like a lot of aluminum parts, milled machine aluminum parts. We make a coffee maker, goes to business jets. Some of it goes to the military, some of it's for ag. So, but they're not any huge, we're not making like huge wings or anything like that. Most of our parts will kind of go in a shoebox almost. But yeah, it kind of mostly started, you know, COVID, we kind of started doing some work from home, but most of our stuff is done out at the airport. So this is more of a storage and overflow, and it's pretty easy to, you know, have a home office there too, so.
Mr. Chair? So you said a coffee maker, so the parts, and you say it's not wings, so it might be parts for an interior of a business jets, for instance?
Yeah. Yep. Yeah. Yeah, from small business jets right up to big airplanes, but they're small, compact coffee makers.
All right, so you might be making something that would go in a 707?
Yeah.
A larger jet?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, what was the size of that building? Are you coming up with 40 by 80?
Yeah, it's about a 40 by 80.
That addition that appears like it's been added on, that's added on already?
Yeah, it gave us upstairs office area, and you know, like a, you know, just like bathroom and kitchenette and all that, and all that was permitted. Everything in the building was permitted.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you. We may have additional questions. Thank you.
Thanks.
This is a public hearing at this point. If anyone would like to make comment on this application, they may come up to the podium.
Mr. Chair, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
Have you opened the public here?
He's doing that now.
With a motion envelope.
Okay, I just.
Yes. Would you move that, make that motion?
Yeah, I'd feel better about it in the minutes, Mr. Sheriff. I just, I move we open the public here. Okay. I have a motion by Commissioner Robbins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pika. Pika, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. So, we have our public hearing open, and as public hearing is open, it's anyone from the public may come up to the podium at this point and may comment on the application. Seeing as no one's coming up to the podium, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Watson, second.
Second.
Commissioner Robbins, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'll entertain a motion on this application before us.
Mr. Chairman, based on the criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of the home extended business interim use permit to operate a facility for development and fabrication of aircraft parts, recognizing the township as approved.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Watson, second by Commissioner Huber. Is there any discussion on the motion before us? During none, aye. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Your application has been approved. Thank you very much. Our next item is a request for a conditional use permit for a farm market, a meat processing facility. Anna Marbury is the applicant and property owner in Section 17 of Blakely Township. And Mr. Wagner, Greg Wagner, will be making our staff report this evening. Good evening, Mr. Wagner.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. So on the screen is the site location map of the subject property in Section 17 of Blakely Township. For locational purposes, the property is, well, you can see, this is the Hamlet of Blakely just to the north, and then County Road 1 runs past the property, which eventually goes down to 169. So this would be southwest of the city of Belle Plaine. Here's an aerial of the property, so you can see it has an existing farmstead, some farm buildings. The eastern half of the property is largely open agricultural land. And then the western portion, and some of the south portion, is wooded ravine area. The property is 41 acres, and so approximately 27 of the acres is in agricultural production. Then there's 14 acres that's wooded ravine. The blue line here indicates a DNR protected waterway, which is called Big Possum Creek. So that waterway, the line has it cutting across property, but it actually flows through these ravine areas here to the south. This ravine section here is just a contributing drainage way to that creek. So it was noted in the staff report that Big Possum Creek as a DNR protected waterway is in the shoreline district, which has a 300-foot buffer, so that's kind of a no disturb, no activity buffer. But that buffer actually corresponds pretty well with the wooded area here, so they're essentially historically been farming up to that shoreline boundary, but not within it. And then this ravine here, as I said, is not in the shoreline protected area. That's important from the standpoint of raising animals, so you cannot have a feedlot or animal confinement area within the shoreline district. But the areas that the applicant is proposing and that have historically been farmed are outside of the shoreline, so there's no concern there. So the request before you again tonight is for a conditional use permit to operate a farm market meat processing facility. A farm market is defined by the county ordinance as a value-added agricultural use, where 51% of the product must be grown or produced on site. So we met with the applicant representative at a development, and the applicant had a development review team, as well as the township, and discussed the raising of livestock. What they're proposing to do here is raise approximately 200 sheep on the property, and then have a small, convert, it's actually this small shed here that's highlighted in white, or with the white roof, convert that into a processing center for those sheep that are raised on site. So this map, the staff report, may have been a little hard to read, but essentially using the existing driveway, existing farm home, there's a quonset and some other agricultural buildings, and then this is the meat processing facility that would be utilized for their processing activity. Currently, to the settlement and kind of to the west of the site, there's a fencing area where the sheep are allowed to graze. And then the eastern half of the property, the applicant intends to turn these, like 10-tillable acres here, and then 10 acres on the western side, into agricultural crop land that they would use to raise crops to feed the sheep. So these are just some additional close-up images of the building. Again, here it is here. And then you can see some of the sheep that are already on the property that they've been raising. Here's the floor plan of the proposed facility. So there would be a customer pickup area here with a public restroom, so that would be the only area that the public would be allowed into. Then there would be an additional employee restroom here. And then the meat processing would take place in the bulk of the building. It's a 2,000-square-foot building, so the front area would be where they indicate cutting and processing, slaughter area, and then they do have a cooler and a freezer. So, and then you can see indicated solid waste container, liquid waste tank. So the main concern with this type of facility is what's happening with the waste, and they've been working with the Minnesota Department of Agricultural, Minnesota Department of Ag, because these do need to be licensed by the state. So they are working on that permit. And just so this commission knows, the state permit requires that they get the local permit first. So we have a condition, in the recommended conditions, that upon approval of the CUP by the county board, they would get and maintain all state licenses. And again, it's a requirement that they get the local one from us first before they get the state one, but they are working with the state to acquire those permits. They've also reviewed this with Scott County Environmental Services. What they're proposing to do, due to the limited hours, which I'll talk about in a little bit here, they're proposing to use the existing septic to connect the two bathrooms into, because there's only going to be like a couple people living in the home. The septic is sized enough that the two bathrooms in this facility would be able to handle that wastewater. And then there will be separate holding tanks that would be pumped from the waste products that would be generated by the slaughter operation. So the bathroom waste and the waste from the animal processing will be separate, and the tanks will be pumped. And then animal, solid animal waste would go in those containers and then would be properly disposed of. So Environmental Services has reviewed all this, and they've approved the proposal as the applicant has laid out here. We, in the staff report that was sent to you, had these 13 recommended conditions, and the applicant and his architect who are here tonight did email us over the weekend. And I just want to point out condition number seven, the hours of operation. They've reduced those, or they got more specific, I should say. This is not going to be a high-traffic generating use. So they've kind of better defined those to be Monday, Wednesday, and Friday from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., Saturday from 3:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m., and closed on Sundays. So they've reduced the hours, I think we had it like 8:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., so they've better defined what those hours are going to be. And then we have conditions in here, like condition 12. They're going to, I believe their architect has already reached out and talked to our building official about permits that they will need for the meat processing building, so they'll have to obtain all those permits. And then condition 10, applicant should maintain and maintain all necessary licensure and permits from Minnesota Department of Ag, Minnesota Department of Health, and other applicable agencies. So we have the conditions in here that we feel are, we're comfortable recommending this to the planning commission with these updated conditions. And then they did meet with Blakely Township back on November 1st. And I'll just point out that the township sometimes gets a little confused. We have a planning recommendation form, we have a building recommendation form for building permits. They've intertwined these sometimes. So they use the building form here, but they did fill out that they, it does say conditional use permit for farm market meat processing facility, and that was signed by the township chairperson. So they are recommending approval, and staff is recommending approval as well. As I said, the applicant and his architect are here. If you would have any questions for them.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Wagner, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Robbins? So I just want to clarify. The end product here is a processed, I'm assuming lamb that would be sold to people. Is that right?
Correct.
And the human waste goes in one container, and the waste from this processing goes in another container, and then those are disposed. Am I right?
Yes, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins. So the bathroom waste would go into the existing septic system, so the one that's attached to the house. So they'll just tie all the bathrooms together into the existing septic. And then the liquid waste from the processing operations would go into a holding tank, and then the solid waste, so like probably the carcass and stuff would go into containers that would be disposed separately.
And those containers would be stored on site and at some point disposed, all right?
Correct. Just like the tanks would be pumped occasionally as needed, they would, once they're full, they'd be hauled away.
Now, just for my edification, you mentioned in the beginning describing the site a river or a stream that's on this site. Am I right?
Correct. It flows through the western portion of the property in the wooded area.
And that's a protected waterway?
Correct.
So none of this is going to bother that, right?
No. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Robbins, that was one thing, I guess, it was in the staff report. So Scott County, we work with, we work very closely with the Scott Soil and Water Conservation District. They have trained personnel who typically deal with landowners on agricultural operations, animal operations, feedlots. So we sent this to the Scott Soil and Water District, and the number of animals here was not a concern. The historic pasturing of animals and what they have on our aerial photography for where they're currently fencing the sheep, it does come down towards the wooded area, but it's not in it. And there's no concern as long as they keep those areas vegetated. So if they're not, as long as they're not overgrazed, it's not a concern. In historical aerial photography, there's been no indication of overgrazing here. The only concern would be if the vegetation, you know, if there's overgrazing, and then you get open soil with runoff that would get into the ravine. If that goes in the ravine into the DNR stream, that's a violation of MPCA standards for polluting the water of the state. So that is a condition. The applicant has been made aware of that, to keep that vegetated.
All right, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, a question.
Commissioner Watson?
The, look back from the analysis that you provided us, that essentially this is going to be a self-contained operation. They're going to raise, they're going to feed, and then they're going to slaughter right on the operation and then sell, right? Okay. The traffic issue doesn't seem to be too much of a problem here. I mean, you've got a flat top road, you know, and then that road going off where it's at. I see you've got it covered, pretty well covered for future expansion, so I think the bases are covered here for the operation.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Watson, when the applicants met with our internal staff team, our highway department is part of that group, so they were in on those initial conversations, made the applicant aware, you know, at a certain threshold, there could be safety improvements required. But when the application was submitted, you know, Nathan, Marty, and myself, we attend the highway review project meeting, this proposal came up, and yeah, they said there were no concerns based on the size of the proposal, so.
Well, staying in business, he's going to have to maintain some good relations with the different agencies in the state, so it's going to be up to him. I'm done.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson?
A couple questions too. What's the maximum number of animals they can have? I see it's 200, and that's 20 animal units.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Johnson, so on a 40-acre parcel, if there's 27 productive acres, I'm going to have to do math, it's a lot. They could have, I think it's a couple thousand sheep.
Oh, wow.
Yeah. Yeah. Because right now, they're at, they're at 200 sheep, equate to about 20 animal units. And I was talking with Scott Schneider at Soil and Water, and he said on 40 acres, technically, at some point, they could get a feedlot permit, which is also a CUP, and that would, you know, allow them to like 500 animal units. So it's potentially thousands.
You can only take 27 acres, not the 40.
Right, but through a CUP, because we have some farming operations that are on smaller property, and then they may have agricultural land surrounding it or whatever, so they could have a lot of animals here, but they're far away from meeting any threshold for a CUP under a feedlot.
Okay, and then it says they're going to have a freezer, so do they ship the product out to people? Or is it only customers that come and pick it up? And how do they get the word out? Do they advertise?
I may invite the applicant or his architect up to explain that component of it.
That would be fine. If either one of you come up, please sign into our sign-in sheet and start your comments with your name, so we have that in the record.
Good evening. I'm Philip Bressart, architect, and this is Anand Barde Ravi. He is the owner of the property. Okay. I think the last question was, how do you expect to get the word out that you're selling?
Online advertising. Basically, you're planning to do a website, try to manage everything through that website. We do have, like, some people that we know if we need to go and get more business that we could talk to, they're like kind of leading in the industry. We're not planning to do it in a bigger scale, so our plan is just to do it step by step and just manage everything through that website and online advertising, through like a Facebook page or just mainly like Facebook page and a website.
Commissioner Robbins? What kind of production are you assuming? You said you want to go step by step with this when you do that, but can you give us some idea of what kind of production you're thinking of in terms of lamb?
Within maybe the next six months or one year, or what time?
Yeah, let's just say the first year.
I would say the first year, we would be processing maybe 50 lamb a week, not more than this. You know, you ask about the amount of lamb that we would have. I don't think at any point we would want to have more than 200. 200, I would say that's our max. Unless in the future, we feel like need or demand to expand this project to like a bigger scale, our plan is just to process around the 50 a week, max, and keep about 200 in the property.
Mr. Chair, follow up. Do you already have customers?
Between me and my family, we process probably 20 a week right now, which is a big family.
Thank you. Commissioner Pika?
Was it noted how many employees you're going to have?
Two people. And those two people, they actually already live in the farm, and we would not need to have more than two people at any point.
Just a question on, I see the building, existing structure, does it even have a concrete floor at this point, or?
Yes.
Okay, so it's going to be modified for year-round use, I would imagine, as your objective of HVAC systems and all of that within the building. Is that correct?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, if you do 50 a week, that's 200 a month. Well, do you keep getting shipped in?
Yes, we could buy lambs. Like, we look for a specific kind of breeding of lamb. And just being in this for the past few years, I mean, we have two big farms that they're doing, like in Minnesota, about If we're extra, we like to breed, that's why we, we need to about the 200, but I think we would be buying, um, from these farmers, I mean, from these people that we know about two or three hours away.
There may be additional questions, but thank you very much for information.
Thank you.
Commissioner Robbins?
Mr. Chair, I'm going to move, we open the public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Robbins. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pika. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is open at this time. Would anyone like to make comment on this application? I see no one coming to the podium. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Thank you.
Have a motion and a second. Commissioner, all in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
At this time, I'll entertain a, a motion or action on this item before us.
Mr. Chairman, based on criteria for approval listed in the staff report, I recommend approval of a conditional use permit for Anan Barbari operating farm market meat processing facility, uh, noticing that the location that township has.
Second. Uh, motion by Commissioner Watson, second by Commissioner Robbins. Is there any discussion before I call for a vote? There ain't none. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you very much. Your application has been approved. Uh, good luck with your business, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'll go to Brad Davis, our planning manager for the planning manager update report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll update you on actions that went to the county board based on your recommendations. On August 18th, the county board did approve the conditional use permit to establish a multiple tenant sales facility. Uh, William and Kathleen Saboto are the applicants and property owners, and that was in Louisville Township. Last week on November 1st, they approved the rezoning of 40 acres from A1 to A3. Doug and Thomas Kess were the property owners in Sand Creek Township. They also approved the interim use permit for an accessory dwelling unit for a family member. Uh, Darrell and Sherry Veer are the applicant and property owner, and that was in Cedar Lake Township.
Um, just a couple of other items of business. Um, the planning department's administrative assistant and deputy, deputy to this clerk, Carrie, is no longer with us. She has accepted another position within the county, but at Health and Human Services. So we are in the process of interviewing and hiring a new administrative assistant. And, um, that person may or may not be here for your December meeting, but I'm sure would be here by your January meeting, depending on how quickly we can interview and get someone. So you'll see a new name coming up, um, getting packets to you and, uh, working with you on all the paperwork and behind the scenes, but I just wanted to.
You expect the person being on board by that time, before?
Well, hopefully in December, we could have someone on boarded and ready for the January meeting.
Okay.
Um, appointments, so on Friday, the board will be going to a kind of day-long retreat workshop to plan for 2023. And part of that is looking at all of the appointments for the different citizen advisory committees. Um, I know we've discussed that topic. Barbara is the one that I've been talking to the most because with redistricting, Barbara's chair got moved from, um, district four to district three, I think I get my two. And so that has created a situation where Commissioner Beer now needs to appoint someone new for this planning commission, and Barbara is aware of that. Um, so there's a couple of interested applicants from prior to like, and I think Commissioner Beer is meeting with them to see who he may want to appoint. That appointment would occur then, um, at their first meeting in January, and then we would have that new commissioner be here potentially at your January or February meeting, depending on how, how everything works.
Can, Mr. Chair, if I could, Brad, remind me how all of this, all of us go. We don't, are not all up to mention Barbara's one, but are all of us reappointed or how does that work?
Yeah, every year you're all up for a reappointment. Well, that changed now, starting, starting in 2023, you, each of you will be appointed to a three-year term and, or a two-year term. And I don't know if that detail has been communicated to you. If not, I will let you know. I think most of you are three years, and there was a couple of two-year terms, just so we staggered it a little bit, and we didn't have everyone leaving the commission all at the same time. So I believe Commissioner Robbins, you're up for a three-year appointment, so your term would be for the next three years, starting in 2023.
But, um, do commissioners have one or two appointments?
Three appointments. So you could serve up to nine years.
No, I mean, but, but does every commissioner appoint one of us? I'm.
Oh, I'm sorry. Good question. We have five commissioner districts, so one of you is representing each of the five commissioner districts, and then two of you are at-large. Commissioner Huber and Commissioner Hinches are at-large. The rest of you are appointed by the commissioner in that district.
So each commissioner has a selection for their district, and then do they vote as a board for the two others?
At-large.
Yeah, they're at-large, okay. Can I just come back to this again, and this is probably me, but I had the thought that Commissioner Beard appointed me when I came on this board.
There's Beer and Beard.
Oh.
It's something we deal a lot with on staff. Beard.
Oh, excuse me, thank you, Barbara. I, I got carried away with that. Say no more, I, I got it, all right? Thanks.
Uh, on that note, you know, Commissioner Beard has stepped down, and there was an election last week, right? Last, second time.
Jody Brennan.
And, yep, Commissioner Brennan, uh, Jody Brennan is the new commissioner from district one. She will be sworn in on, uh, the first meeting in January.
Brad, I was a little confused on that three-year, two-year. I thought the three-year included, uh, one year, some of us were on, righty, so, but, so there'd be a four-year then.
We're kind of starting from scratch in 2023, so.
Yeah, okay, so it'd be a three-year.
Either you'll be a three-year appointment or a two-year appointment.
Yeah, I'm just. Okay, I was a little confused, I thought that included, but now I know, that's okay.
It was at one time, three-year terms.
And the maximum nine, right?
Yeah, and then it went back to every year.
It went about fi- five, seven, eight years ago, went to one-year terms?
Yeah, yeah. And now we're back to how it used to be.
Now we're back to, yes, thank you. So, uh, uh, Mr. Chair, one, one final thing. This present board will be making these appointments.
Yes, I hear what you're saying, because you're wondering about the new commissioner, but it's my understanding that the present board will be making these appointments. You know, it'll be, but it will be voted on, on January 3rd, and I don't know if Commissioner Brennan will be voting on that or if Commissioner Beard will, I don't know that.
That's a good question. Yeah, it is a good question. Um, all right, thank you, that's, that's enough. I'll talk to you after the meeting.
Yeah. Um, and so, uh, December could be the final meeting that Barbara is able to sit on this, unless they're not able to find an appointment, I think. I haven't talked to Barbara about this, but maybe you'd be able to stay on in January or February, we'll have to talk. But, uh, December could be the last. We want to definitely recognize Barbara, and we traditionally do some kind of gathering after that final meeting of the year.
What's the date of the summer meeting?
Um, the second Monday, uh.
The date?
Anyway.
I know that, yes.
About the 13th.
Got it.
I'm going to be in Hawaii through the 12th.
Yeah, December 12th.
Tough life.
I might make it back. I, 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 no, I'm coming back the 12th, I think, but I haven't looked at the calendar, so I will try and for sure make that.
We'll, we'll update more, uh, kind of a holiday gathering.
Because I wouldn't want to miss that.
And then tomorrow, some of you have mentioned this already, tomorrow there'll be a public hearing in this room in front of the county board to, um, consider action on the Minnesota Renaissance Festival's conditional use permit.
Can you guys go back and explain that for us, please?
Yeah. During the last season, the county received a lot of complaints from residents, business owners, visitors, um, property owners about the traffic that backed up on township roads, county roads, uh, even some city streets in their attempt to get to the Renaissance Festival. And, um, over the course of the season, staff has determined that they have violated four different conditions that were issued to them in their 1998 permit. And, um, that's something that you guys should know, when you guys approve a conditional use permit with 20, 30 conditions, we do find ourselves at times having to determine if they are violating those conditions. And under the zoning ordinance, if the county board finds, uh, violations, that is ground for revocation of a permit, to pull the permit. And that's, uh, some action that the county board will be looking at tomorrow.
So, so they're actually holding a hearing or a public hearing?
Public hearing. We had sent notices out to every address within one mile of the Renaissance Festival, notifying them of tomorrow's public hearing. And so it's very possible to have a big crowd here tomorrow, uh, from the public that may want to comment on this.
Do they get a chance to correct that, though, before they take?
The applicant will certainly have time to make any statements or provide information.
Did they move their location?
No.
And so, but they've been doing this for a long time, what, all of a sudden this is a problem?
Well, with COVID, I think everybody rushed their.
Is that what happened?
What?
And the attendance might have gone up.
I think the attendance went way up.
Oh.
Well, like Friday, we went out of town on 169. The traffic must have been backed up about four miles. They were doing roadwork, like trying to get to the Canterbury Craft Show. I mean, it was unbelievable how far the traffic was backed up. And that's because it had not been so much for a while and.
Ever since 41.
Yep.
Went in, people sit on their phones and try to get around it, so they, it takes them around, uh, Brickyard Road and all that, their little apps and stuff, and that's where the problem is, if they would have just.
It's going on all the o- off-streets trying to get around traffic.
Bingo, and it's shutting down the township. That's, ever since 41, it was a huge problem, it was a problem before that, but since 41's completed, that kind of deteriorated.
Mr. Chair, Brad, what's the consequence of tomorrow? I mean, uh, let me be outrageous. Could the Renaissance Fair be stopped in its, its shoes and not be permitted to operate anymore, or what's the consequence?
Well, that's an option. I'm not sure if the county board's going to make a decision tomorrow. They want to get a lot of testimony tomorrow from impacted businesses and, and residents. And then they have a decision to make, and we'll lay out the options that they have. One option would be revocation of the permit, which would mean they could not operate that conditional use on that property any further.
But that will probably, I mean, you'll have more than that, there'll be some options.
There'll be other options.
But if it's traffic, how, other than, how, how do they manage that? I mean, they are in charge of roads.
I don't want to get into a lot of details here, but I'm going to send you a link to the staff report that documents what we think are the four violations, and that will answer, I think, some of your questions.
Would you please do that, please?
Yeah. Brad, was this board ever presented something on this conditional use that we missed or anything, but there was nothing that we missed or?
The last time it went through a, a planning commission was in 1998.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And no, I don't think anything was missed. Thank you.
You know, the only thing that we came close to was when we did the.
Q Prime.
Yeah, the Q Prime application, which was, uh, for an amphitheater down there.
Yeah.
And, and that application largely failed on traffic.
Traffic.
On the traffic impacts and, 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 and they couldn't get to plan that it'd satisfy the planning commission, that they would be able to satisfactorily adapt to, to this exact type of thing. So that's, that's the only thing I've ever heard, because we've never seen it, and I've been here since 2001. So we've need, never seen it in front of us back again. Is there a possibility that they would come back somehow? I mean, is that, what are the options that they might end up in, with, in front of this board potentially?
That's a good question, that's what I'm getting at.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, to be determined if one of their options is they want to unilaterally or proactively open their conditional use permit to address some of these concerns. It could come back here. The board has somewhat said they'd like to just keep it at the board level, and they may not want to defer it back to this group. So that part I'm not positive, but typically if, uh, someone reopens their CUP, obviously it, it comes here for a public hearing and then a recommendation. I can't guarantee that that would be the process here. It may be if they reopen their permit, it would go right to the board for a decision.
So again, Brad, has this been a problem, or is this just because of more attendance it became a problem?
I think it's a combination of both, and I think when I give you the staff report, you'll see just some situations that have changed on the ground.
Okay.
Yeah.
Interesting, okay.
Interesting.
It's a big deal.
Yeah, it is.
Significant.
That's all I have for an update.
Okay, very good. Is there anything else for the general cause before, uh, adjourn? Okay, a motion to adjourn?
A one.
Commissioner Watson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pika. All in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, have a good evening.
I think about the state here and what most people.